Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. And I ask that everybody please join the board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you again and good morning. First item on our agenda, as always, is public comment number one. This is our opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda or really anything you'd like to comment on. Anybody wishing to do so, come right on up to the microphone. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to bid opening for the Story County Justice Center re-roofing project. Jovi and Leanne. Hi there, morning guys.
The whole document is freezing. It must be recorded.
Perfect.
And you have the tally sheet in front of you. I did highlight the two since we have two back-to-back, but don't make sure you have the one that has Justice Center on the top, please.
Okay.
Ready? First one is for Central State's roofing.
Okay.
References page. Acknowledgement of the defendant, one. Show base bid of $319,200. Alternate two, $335,600. They are from... Good morning. Thanks, your people.
Looks to me like your fingers sharper than that letter on there.
It's looking at. All right. Bid bond is included. Acknowledgement of the defendant, one. Next one is from 316 Construction Group out of Ames, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Price for alternate one, $482,191.
This is base bid or alternate one?
Alternate one.
Okay.
No bid for base bid.
Okay.
Alternate one is $482,191,481.
The process is you acknowledge receipt of the bids today will come back next week. I agree with you, that's what Tedesco has outlined. The selection of the review committee, my apologies, review through councils formulate a recommendation for the board next week and give a contract for following the... The committee that we're looking at right now with your approval would include Jovi, John Michael, Alyssa Waymo, Todd Lumbel, and then Ethan and myself just to help the process. Do you have any questions?
No questions. So what I would look for is for acknowledgement of received bids and direction to staff to have the ad hoc committee get together and review and make recommendations.
I would so move as just stated by supervisor Sanders.
Motion in the second. Discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Chidi?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. All right. Next item for us is receive and review bids for the sale of bonds for $1 million. This is third phase of Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. Renee Tweet and Leanne Harder.
Oh, my goodness, you wrote that. I didn't think about that.
Leanne was giving me the where is Renee Tweet looking. I'm sitting there saying she's right there as the first one.
It's not in the back of my head. Good morning.
Good morning.
I delivered personally this bid for a million dollars to nine different banks around Story County. And I only received one back, so my part was easy.
Okay.
This bid will go to where is Renee Tweet looking? Great Western Bank. Interest rate at 3.94 for 10 years.
Can you repeat that?
3.94 for 10 years. I did bring it back.
And who's it from again?
Great Western Bank.
Which not long ago, that wouldn't seem high, but I think as you see the bid moving...
With volatile rates, I'm really not surprised. I kind of expected at least two or three, but...
Historically, this will be seen as cheap money, so it does as well as we could. Can we get a recommendation on this next week as well, Leanne?
The resolution will be on your end of October 11th.
Okay. Questions? Motion to acknowledge receipt of the won't known bid.
I would move acknowledgement of the bid from Great Western Bank as presented today.
Further discussion? Chidi?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good, have a good day. So Renee is busy helping run the, our veteran supermarket that's going on today, and so she's out the door. Next item is consideration of proclamation declaring the week of November 10th through the 18th, 2018, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. Carla Webb?
The National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is November 10th through the 18th, and we do have agency representation today from the city of Ames. We have Vanessa, United Way Sarah, Access App, and then Troy, Detroit, Michigan. Thank you all for being here today. Did I miss anybody? Per the Hunger and Homelessness website, 43.1 million Americans live below poverty level. 549,000 Americans are homeless on a typical night. 42 million Americans are at risk of suffering from hunger, and one in five children live in poverty. Based on data collected by Iowa Community Alliance in 2017, there were 12,932 Iowans homeless in 2017. Many served by emergency shelters, traditional housing programs, and rapid rehousing projects. It is recommended affordable household expenses should not exceed a third of a household's income. Households with incomes below 30% of the county median are at considerable more risk for homelessness than households with higher income. In Story County in 2017, there were 6,715 households living below 30% of the median income. In 2016, that was 1,500. This left 80 affordable living units. Per Feeding America, most recent data in 2016, there were 14,616 individuals with food and security in Story County. Currently, there's collaboration in Story County looking at coordinated entry process for homeless prevention services for rent and utility assistance. With that provided by the Emergency Residents Project, City of Ames, Salvation Army, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, and Story County Community Services. Collectively, these agencies provided $711,152 rental assistance in fiscal year 2017 and 2018. This assisted 2,496 households. Many individuals are living paycheck to paycheck, and at any time due to life circumstances, they may be at risk of homelessness in the Board of Supervisors who are considering the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week proclamation.
So question for Carla before we read in the proclamation. Okay. Story County Iowa proclamation, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas, for the past 26 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Story County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, which include but are not limited to Assault Care Center Extending Shelter and Support Access, Emergency Residents Project, Food at First, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Mid-Iowa Community Action, Story County Community Services, The Hunger Collaboration, Salvation Army, Veterans Affairs, Youth and Shelter Services. Whereas, the focus of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2018 continues to be resolve to fight poverty. And whereas, we recognize that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Story County. And whereas, the intent of the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the commitment and dedication of the members of the Two Rivers region to educate the community and provide the needed services and support to citizens who suffer from hunger and/or homelessness circumstance. We, therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, I would hereby proclaim November 10th through the 18th, 2018, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. On behalf of our community, we encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private and public nonprofit service entities. Anything further or a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I just want to thank everybody who has worked year after year after year to continue to fight poverty in this county. There are few of the faces that are out here, poverty and homelessness, and there will be more faces coming in the future, but thank you all so much because you do the work that some people just would lose heart. You guys continue to make slow, steady progress, and the lens are... So thank you very much, and I'll make the motion.
Yeah. So motion in the second, just underscore what Supervisor Olson just said. It is vital that we find a way to break this cycle of poverty. And what we absolutely know is that once somebody is homeless, they are more susceptible to becoming homeless again and again. And there's a multitude of answers. I'm proud that Story County in total is supportive of all the myriad of answers, including more affordable housing, but bringing more good-paying jobs and making sure that we have the training necessary so that we can develop a workforce that can get those good-paying jobs. And I'm so appreciative of everybody involved in breaking this proclamation and, as Laura said, the work you guys do on a day-to-day basis to make our community a better place for those most susceptible to some of the problems that we have. Anything further, Board? Olson?
Aye.
Chidi?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
10th through the 18th is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Story County. Thanks, Carla.
Thanks, Carla.
Next is consideration of minutes from November 6th.
Yes, presented.
Chidi?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders? Aye. No personnel actions this week. Claims for the 15th.
Who goes and presents?
Olson?
Aye.
Chidi?
Aye.
Sanders? Aye. Consent agenda?
As listed.
Seven?
Motion in the second. Chidi?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders? Aye. We have four public hearing items today. First one is first consideration of ordinance 275, amending chapters 85 and definitions, 87 land division requirements in chapter 88, general site planning standards. And Emily is, who's not here, so Amelia and Jerry are going to present this. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
But we're giving Emily full credit for doing all the work, right?
For sure. You've got to correct her credits, too. As you said, Rick, we have four amendments to the county's code of ordinances that we're very proud of. These have been before the Planning and Zoning Commission multiple times, and they've provided insightful discussion, which has been very valuable to the staff as we crafted the final version. These final versions have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the November 7th meeting. We have published in the three newspapers established by the Board of Supervisors on November 1st. All four ordinances have been reviewed by the county attorney's office, AKA Ethan Anderson. We appreciate his insightfulness. And again, this is the first consideration. Second consideration will be November 4th. So the first ordinance to review amendment is transportation impact analysis. This is an item that was on the Planning and Development's work program. We were to look into an ordinance that would give us the ability to review the impact of proposed development, whether it be industrial, commercial development, impact of residential subdivisions on the county road network and intersections. So I'm going to dive right into the actual amendment. We've provided some definitions under chapter 85. First thing is level of service, which gets to basically how, you know, what the impact of driving on a particular road is from point A to point B, how many vehicles are on it, how many stops there are, what speed you can go. And so that would be a level A if there's minimal impact. So again, that addresses speed, time travel, freedom of maneuvering, traffic interruptions, comfort and convenience. And then as you go up in the alphabet, so to speak, there's more traffic involved, there's probably more stops, you're not going to be able to travel at the speed you'd like to, there's going to be more disruptions along your route from point A to point B. We added a definition on traffic calming, which gets to ways to address how to slow down traffic and improve safety. We also have a definition of traffic impact analysis. Traffic impact analysis will be required for all site plans involving commercial industrial development, as it will be required for major subdivisions, and those will be reviewed at conceptual review at the preliminary flat stage. So we're talking about residential subdivisions with greater importance. So we have definitions for traffic impact analysis, definition for traffic impact study. We also made some adjustments to chapter 87, which is the division chapter under major subdivisions, so we included some language for traffic impact analysis and traffic impact study. At the heart of this ordinance, where most of the adjustments were made, is chapter 88, which is the general site planning standards. And there's really four primary sections. One covers purpose, two covers administration, three covers the contents of the traffic impact analysis. I'll go through some of these details we do, and then four covers the actual traffic impact study. So I won't go through all of these, but purpose really gets to the heart of what the ordinance is. It says to allow Story County to determine the safety and congestion impacts and related consequences of proposed major traffic generating uses. It goes on to say that it will require that applicants respond with reasonable proposals to resolve potential native traffic impacts that their proposed uses will have on county and other nearby streets. Under administration, that's where we get into traffic impact analysis. Again, this will be required for all site plans mills involving commercial, industrial uses, non-residential uses, as well as major subdivisions. It will require a professional licensed Iowa engineer to submit this information. The full cost is to be borne by the applicant. When you get to D and F, there's language about the identifying improvements that might be needed through this analysis, and the ability of the county engineer or supervisors to kind of fold in projects that might be included in the capital improvements planning as well as the budgeting, and also how much of those improvements that are identified are the responsibility of the applicant. The engineer and the board supervisors have the ability to waive the traffic impact study. Traffic impact study is broken down into limited impact and complete impact. And limited is when the number of trips generated are from zero up to 100. That's a limited traffic impact study requirement. If it's more than that, then it's going to be a complete traffic impact requirement. I'll just go through some of the details on the actual analysis. Talks about identifying the existing number of vehicle trips per day. It identifies the number of vehicle trips generated by the proposed development. The analysis shall determine the existing street conditions and intersections within a quarter mile of the proposed improvement. Also talks about providing crash data over the last 10 years. And so again, based on the numbers that are generated, it will determine whether or not it's a limited study that would be required or a complete study. As far as the actual limited study, there's language in there about providing average daily trip counts during peak hour volumes, projected average daily trips at the development, peak information in the morning, evening, and or weekend traffic volumes, existing and proposed level of service again for the area within a quarter mile. Goes on to talk about the limited traffic impact study shall identify improvements facilities to be installed or actions to be taken to ensure the following. So here's the threshold to make sure that level of service C or higher overall for all publicly dedicated streets and intersections and accesses. That there's no reduction in the level of service for existing streets, intersection and accesses. There's language in there about site distances to provide protections for motorists entering and leaving intersections. And then it goes on into the complete traffic impact study requirements, which if you look at it, there's twice as much information that's required. Again, this would be something that the engineer would provide, would be reviewed by staff, would be reviewed by the county engineer, and subject for review for supervisors. Do you have to answer any of your questions?
I do. I have a question. Okay. In the event that we would be talking about an intersection where there would be more than one developer within that quarter mile, okay? And so how has the staff talked through a scenario like that about what would happen, especially if there were improvements needed down the road, or the developer would need, both developers would need to help pay?
Yeah, there's a provision here that talks about the two developers can work together to submit one study, so we would take into account both proposed new projects to look at the impacts.
Okay, and so then I'm going to carry that a little further. In the event that one developer doesn't agree with the other developer, all right, where, what is our mechanism at that point, or do we have any mechanism to try to move forward with improvements?
I don't know that that's specifically addressed in the language. It would be addressed through the review and input process from staff, input from the county engineer, and then these go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they're going to have input in it, and then ultimately it will be up to the supervisors to weigh on if there's discrepancies.
Thank you, devil.
So just a question on your question, Laura. So as I see it, if the two developers don't agree, it just means that both developers have to on their own pay for a traffic study, which wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. And so I'm just trying to figure out...
Well, my question was not on paying for the traffic study itself, it was for the improvements needed down the road. If there were, if there was a disagreement between developer A and developer B, how those...
And then ultimately, it will be up to the board supervisors to weigh in on if there's discrepancies.
Thank you.
But so, just a question on your question, Lars. So as I see it, if the two developers don't agree, it just means that both developers have to, on their own, pay for a traffic study, which wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. And so I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, my question was not on paying for the traffic study itself. It was for the improvements needed down the road. If there were, if there was a disagreement between developer A and developer B, how those costs should be split to pay for actual improvements?
But aren't in the board of supervisors the entity that makes that determination?
Wanted just to clarify.
Absolutely. And the other one I see in this is we don't, we still don't have any mechanism to deal with any type of impacts that occur outside of that quarter mile. I'm thinking specifically of Cameron State, which is a great development. But the impact that it's had at the corner of Cameron School Road and George Washington Carver is pronounced. There was no way for us to review that when it was built. And even with this, there's no real way for us to review it because it's outside of the quarter mile.
Can you touch again on the board's waiver, really, as you spoke?
Yeah, the waiver comes into play after the engineer submits the analysis. It'll determine whether or not it's going to be a limited traffic impact study or a complete study. And based on the information from the actual analysis, that's where the county engineer and or the board supervisors have the authority to, based on information that's provided, waive the detailed traffic study and you determine that it's not necessary.
So my question is, moving forward, assuming the board adopts this on first reading, it seems to me, we've got a limited number of commercial industrial projects and a limited number of developers that have built what I would consider to be more major type subdivisions. Is there a method for us, assuming we adopt this on first reading, to get this directly into the hands of those that this would have impacted in the past to get comments from them before we, before we move forward?
We included a lot of the engineers, development, community builders in the ordinance and didn't get all the input back.
Which does surprise me, but sometimes those individuals and entities, once something passes first reading, will take a new, harder look at something because all of a sudden it becomes real. And so I would just ask that we reach out to those. And as limited, I'm not talking about sending a big mail or to anybody, but you guys have all their contact information. Just, hey, be aware that this passed on first reading. You may want to take a look at it in case you want to provide comments.
I think it's always good to provide good customer service. Sometimes, as we've discovered in the board up here, it's difficult to determine who's really impacted or how far that outreach should go. So I'd just like to make note of that because I understand what you're headed for. Maybe this is, these are the people who would be most impacted and they're clearly able to identify them. We're not always able to do that. And so if there's some residents or someone down the road, a property owner, who then pays attention after it's all passed, just to make sure. We can't always identify everyone who might be impacted.
Sure, and I think it's a great point. I'm not even suggesting that we can identify all the developers that this might impact. But we know who we've worked with in the past that this would have impacted.
Right.
And it seems reasonable to me that we would gather as much information as we could.
I'd have no problem asking this on first reading with the expectation, Jerry will do an immediate outreach to non-developers to get their temperature on this one. Because like Rick said, I think they're going to set up straight and I guess it's moving.
Yeah, and the engineering firms are great because they may know about somebody who may be headed early.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so any further questions? All right, then let's open the public hearing on this traffic study proposal. Anybody wishing to speak to it, come right on up to the microphone. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for consideration.
I move first consideration of ordinance number 275, amending Chapters 85 definitions 87, wind vision requirements in Chapter 88, general site plan standards, which are traffic impact study and analysis as presented today.
And set second reading.
Set second reading for next week, November 20th.
I second.
With the caveat that Jerry's Planning and zoning office will do an outreach to affected.
Absolutely, that's outside the motion though. So the motion is just adopt on first reading? Absolutely right, Marty. Adopt on first reading, set the second reading for the 20th, we'll count on staff to gather, or potentially gather as much information as possible. Motion is second, further discussion. Chee, Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye, pass this first reading today. Come back to us, second reading next week. All right, next item is, next item is first consideration of ordinance 276, amending 88.04 access requirements.
Yep, so this is another one amended in our general site planning standards chapter. This one is specific to access requirements requiring that, well, actually it's already required that new lots have frontage, but then for lots without frontage or folks that want to use an easement, a shared easement, if they can't meet separation distances between driveways or site distance requirements to set a new driveway, they have to have a shared drive as well. So this is an existing section in our general site planning standards. You know, I think there was some interest from the private sector on clarifying this ordinance, which is, you know, how things kind of got started. You know, we took it just with a clarification of requirements to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We got some feedback specifically from box engineers that were concerned about there was an existing provision on limiting the length of a shared easement to 50 feet in length. You know, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, where the October 3rd Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, the commission considered that given that new lots must have frontage and that existing lots are limited to only having four single family dwellings, POF, and easement, if they don't have frontage, that those safeguards are just sufficient to not need to require that 50 foot length limit as well. So staff brought the ordinance amendment back with the length limit removed. We also added a width requirement though. So 25 feet for a single family dwelling, 50 feet for more than one single family dwelling or other uses, just to ensure that there's sufficient room, or 20 feet for a single family, excuse me.
Correct.
So the main amendments that are proposed are, you know, clarifying the ordinance, separating outdoor requirements for driveways off county roads, frontage requirements for existing lots without frontage, and then frontage requirements for new lots. Those are all kind of mashed together currently. So we wanted to make clear categories with those. We also want to clarify the 300-foot separation distance that's required for driveways off county roads and add in that there is a 500-foot site distance requirement. That wasn't previously in there, but it is an existing requirement. Again, we eliminated the 50-foot length limit on shared access easement. Want a parcel lot or tract has frontage. We did maintain that frontage is required for all new lots, but we did clarify that lots created through the residential parcel subdivision process are accepted. That's an existing exception, but it wasn't in this section. It was in land division requirements under that subdivision. So we just wanted to put that in there to make sure folks see it. And we also maintained to limit of four dwellings, no more than two two-family dwellings or more than two multiple dwellings, but are allowed to take access via an easement if they don't have frontage. And then finally, we did add those width requirements. So if you have any questions, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this.
Questions?
And then this is pretty straightforward. I think this just reflects how we see growth down the counties now. I think it takes away that which was independent, so this is pretty easy.
I agree with that. Thank you for the explanation of it because as this topic originally came up in a communication from Mr. Renaud, who's very well detail oriented, which is good since he's a civil engineer, but I was trying to follow some of those maps at first. So I think that this worked to get it down to kind of our understandable limits. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm just appreciative that we work with those that are impacted by this to come up with something that's much more clear and is workable for everybody. If there's nothing further here, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address ordinance 276. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for action.
I would move first consideration of ordinance number 276, amending Chapter 88.04 access requirements with second reading to occur on November 20th.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. 276 passes on first reading, second reading will be next week. All right, first consideration of ordinance 278, amending 89 home businesses, home businesses in Chapter 90, conditional uses for home businesses.
Home businesses, the amendment came about through our annual review. Currently, we review the home business permits annually. They're an administrative review. And we were consistently seeing issues involving compliance with the ordinance, concerns about having more than the one employee beyond the number of people that reside in the dwelling on the promise, use of more than one building for the business and outside storage. So we put together the draft and went to Planning and Zoning Commission, and there was some really good discussion. Probably one of the most insightful things that came from that was that our ordinance, like community ordinances, don't have anything in place to address businesses that have plans to grow, whether it be a minimal amount of growth or more of a significant type of growth. And with this amendment, we have that capability. So what is being proposed is two different methods to consider growth for a home business. One is consider a minimal easing of the requirements. A minimal easing of the requirement would be an application would be submitted, it would be reviewed by the Planning and Development Director. There are some criteria that would be reviewed as to what minimal easing is. And it's, it would be something where maybe more than one employee is added, small garden shed is added for storage. They could use a space outside or outside storage that would be screened from adjacent properties and over the road and riding. So again, this is administratively reviewed. There's a provision that allows for an appeal of the Planning and Development Director's decision. Planning and Development Director also has the ability upon receiving the application for a minimal easing, if he or she believes that it's something that would be more of a significant easing of the requirement, to request the submission of a significant ease, which a significant easing of the requirement will follow the traditional use permit process. There'll be the application. Prior to that, we start with conceptual review of all the departments in the county. If there's outside entities, cities that have an impact, they would be invited to review the application. But it would be reviewed by county staff, taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation, and then ultimately they would go to the Board of Adjustment for action. With the significant or substantial easing, there's a transition element that's required. They have to be able to demonstrate plans that leave that site and go to a district that's owned for that use. So if they want to do something that meets the criteria of a significant easing, they have to have a transition plan. And they can stay in that location for up to three years. The ordinance provision amendment allows for extension up to two additional years if requested. But again, the focus with that is that they're not going to be there long term. Their vision is greater than what you would see of use for a home business. Because typically with home businesses, if they're meeting our current requirements, your neighbors are not going to likely know that a home business is being offered because there's a limited impact to that site, limited impact to neighbors, limited abilities, dust, odor, traffic, and those kinds of things. So that is the amendment. We also are changing, we're suggesting a change from a two-year review to a, or a one-year review to a two-year biannual review. And if you have any questions.
I talked to you about this earlier, and this all works on a proposal basis if you know about these businesses. What are you, what's your office going to do to know about these businesses?
We are going to do some outreach. We've got probably 60 or 70 home businesses that we're aware of, maybe a few out there that we're not aware of. But we're going to, we're going to work hard to put together an outreach program to educate home businesses on the current requirements and these new provisions. We think there's going to be some excitement and some interest in knowing that home businesses have some flexibility. Again, I've, I've worked in four different jurisdictions I'm not aware of. None of those jurisdictions did something like this, so. We're excited about it. Planning and Zoning Commission is excited about it. And I think it would be fruitful and useful. We've got officials to look at.
Sure.
God, devil's advocate here. So the clock would start on a business that you're not aware of.
Well, there's a.
This is a vicious, okay, near outreach, and you don't become aware of it. Just saying, because we've dealt with that up here. And so you've got timelines as far as, you know, extensions and whatnot. Who's the clocks guard for that business that's there that you don't know?
Well, I mean, we try to work with everybody that we can. But the way the ordinance is written, it would start from when they actually made the submission. And they're supposed to be in compliance with the current requirements for at least a year, whether they're asking for a minimal easing or a substantial easing. So they need to be able to demonstrate that they are in compliance with the order. We actually propose different options, but the format that's before you is well supported by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is what we're asking for support for today.
Any more questions?
The length of time for transition bothers me. Three years with application, or with the possibility of a two-year extension, that's five years. We're talking about home businesses that are getting compliance to begin with for a year. So most companies, if they want to do a major, you know, type of growth or they've got growth plans, five years is a long time. How did the commission settle on three years then with a two-year possible extension as opposed to maybe 18 months or something?
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion back and forth. We did look at other ordinances, but we kind of oscillated between two and three years. And it really kind of depends on the business and what the plans are. It might be that they want to add a building because they need more storage. But they, what we see a lot is they have a need for a lot of employees. They need more than one employee. So I guess it really kind of depends on what the use is, what the business is. We have professional insurance offices, daycare, contractors. It's all, all types.
You mentioned a couple where I could see there would be increased traffic immediately, okay? An expansion of a daycare, an expansion with a construction company, or you're just, you're, you know, you're shortlisted. So that's why I'm thinking, geez, if I'm the neighbor and they're expanding and I got this up to three years and I know the ordinance says you can't impact the area, but just by virtue of all of a sudden you've doubled your daycare and you've got people driving down the road, you know, double or triple the number. So how do we deal with that if in fact we've told them, yeah, you have three years to go ahead and relocate? I mean, you're violating right now, but we've just told you it's okay. You're violating three years.
But of course, I don't think there's anything in here that automatically says we're going to say, okay, right?
Right.
There's a process through which they can tell us what they're doing. And I think in the cases that you cite, you'd say, no, no, that's not a reasonable growth plan. And we're just looking for the growth plan.
It would be a conditional use permit, application that would be submitted. We have a notification requirement that we send out to all property owners who then are court and also may be involved in this review and can participate with the employee, come to public hearings before Planning and Zoning Commission adjusts. So very good to be considered as well.
I do think it's unique and it's stretching the box to go ahead and provide accommodations for transition. So that, so I like that.
To potentially provide.
To potentially provide accommodations. Does not address the problem you originally were noticing, which is that. which is that people were in non-compliance to begin with. And did the commission talk about addressing that in the future?
Well, I think, like what Marty got to, that, the outreach. You know, it's one thing to put it in writing and establish it through our certification process, but I think we have a responsibility as staff to do what we can to communicate using our website and getting help from the office and, well, and talk to people about working there. So, I'm thinking that by doing that, that's gonna solve all the, all of the issues probably now. That's gonna go a long way for it.
It's not, but again, it's, it's us doing what we can do. And occasionally, you're gonna have items that fall outside the bell curve, right? I mean, that they're on the fringes. And this at least gives us a mechanism to try to deal with those in cases where the business owner is truly trying. This doesn't address somebody who is knowingly and willfully flaunting our regulations, right? We should deal with those the way we deal with it. Two, two quick points. One, just to note that ag-related business on A1 is treated a little differently than any of this. And that, we're not changing that in here. And the second one to note is, board of supervisors always has the ability, if the board of supervisors so chooses, to rezone a property which would, could impact this. That's not addressed in here, rightly not addressed in here. But there's two components that I view this document as intending to give flexibility and a pathway to existing businesses to grow. This is how you can grow, this, you know, this is acceptable, this is not. Not as a limiting factor.
Those are good points.
Yep. Anything further before we open the public hearing?
Nope, we had a very good discussion here. I hope the public is aware of the fact that we are just trying to give everybody that wants to start their own business in the incorporated a pathway to future success. But we have an obligation to the people that live around them to maintain their quality of life. And that's, as I see it.
Okay, if we're, if we're gonna have zoning, then we need to adhere to what those zoning standards say, right? Okay, so let's open the public hearing. Anybody wishes to address anything in ordinance 278 that we've been discussing? Come right on up. And seeing no one move to the microphone, turn the board for potential action.
Move consideration ordinance 278, amending Chapter 89 of Home Businesses and Chapter 98, conditional uses, Table 90 dash one, Table of Conditional Uses, setting a second reading on the twentieth of November.
Second.
Motion to the second, further discussion. Jerry, anything to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
All right, absolute. Chitty.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. All right, last public hearing, I have first consideration of ordinance 279. And this one is campgrounds.
Campgrounds, commercial campground in RV parks. I think the board of supervisors will recall that we had an amendment to allow cabins to be constructed at commercial campground, commercial campground in RV parks. So, these are private uses, not county parks. So, what this amendment does is address the, it's Chapter, Chapter 90, which provides the detailed standards for commercial campgrounds and travel trailers. Those are really limited changes. The biggest change though is, when we went to the planning and zoning commission, there was a lot of discussion about our current language and how we restrict a private business on the time of year that their customers can go to their facilities. So, because currently, we, you know, during the winter months, we only permit customers, whether it be in a cabin or in an RV, to be in their facility for a total of thirty days. So, all that language restricting the time of year that customers can go to a commercial campground or RV park was struck. So, you're not, you'll see that any longer. That was actually in the definitions section, Chapter 85. We really amended the provision that addresses the consecutive number of days that you can stay in a cabin. That maximum is thirty days. The maximum number of days that you can stay in an RV is thirty days. But because commercial campground and RV parks, the review process is a conditional use permit. We have language now that if a applicant, park owner, would like to have an extended stay beyond the thirty days, they have that ability to do that when they make their seminal for their conditional use permit. So, that's, that's the main thing. And then, of course, commercial cabins are not permitted in a residential manufactured housing district. Or you can have RVs through the conditional use permit seminal process. We have a few of those situations now, so. Those are really the two main things. Again, the planning and zoning commission has provided tremendous money with assistance.
Yeah, questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
As you've seen in some of our trailer courts around the county, when we have large construction projects that would point to the lawn or at the point of the wind currents. So, the trailer park owners are there required in their own position or you would be outreaching them to have workers that are on a temporary basis that will be staying within.
Right, this is another ordinance that we're going to do some outreach with on existing mobile home parks. And we'll let them know about this, the current standards and the amendment, that, you know, what the limits are, and that they can extend, request an extended stay.
I'd like to, I'd just thank you for taking a deep, deep look at the concern that I'd originally brought up about long-term rentals or these, these types of cabins and RV parks being used. They're supposed to be for short-term, but all of a sudden, they turn into a long-term rental situation. So, thank you for looking at it.
Yeah, because our preface is, is Burke is gonna do a tremendous build-out, I suspect, here to see people that are journeyman, tradesmen that would be moving into our area through, through the construction phase. And I think this will have some real impact early on in regards to their existence and the charter of park owners themselves.
Although we were pretty well filled with our mobile home courts, but that doesn't mean some people would be.
Twin Acres, you'll obviously see, you know, that's, and Maxwell will do that. And you will see, trust me, there are people there will tuck in and fill every lot that they can. And that's, that kind of speaks to what is right here.
Provides very much, yeah.
Yeah, and again, just pointing out, this does not address what happens within municipalities.
Correct.
If, if a municipality has something, they get to set their own. But like Twin Acres is the perfect example. Yep. No other questions? All right, in that case, let's open the public hearing. And ask if there's anyone who would like to address ordinance 279. Seeing no one move to the microphone, close the public hearing, turn to the board.
I move first consideration of ordinance number 279, amending Chapter 85 definitions and Chapter 90 conditional uses related to commercial campground and travel trailer parks with second rating, second reading, sorry, slated for November twentieth.
Motion in the second, further discussion. You guys did a great job working with planning and zoning commission to give what I think is more clarity in these four areas. And I'm really appreciative. I'm excited to see what, if any, comments we get here over the next couple of weeks.
We'll let you know, thank you.
Olson.
Aye.
Chitty.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Ordinance 279 is adopted on first reading. We'll have second reading next week. That takes us to additional items. First one is discussion consideration of revised employee recognition policy. And we're talking about waiving the seven-day review. So, this is something that we've been talking about for years. And it's just the possibility of allowing some flexibility on what kind of award, whether it's gonna be a coffee club or a tumbler or something like that, and letting our HR director make that call.
So, I added a little bit of language over, over the last couple of years. We've got some feedback from employees on the current awards. And so, I just put in there, the only change to the policy aspect that is highlighted. And that is why I'm asking for a seven-day review. Do you wait? Items that would be given to the, or not given choices to the employees to be like police, lawyer with the story county logo, a cooler totes. This has already been designed.
Yep.
And this is ready.
And it's equal or lesser value than what we have already.
We do have restrictions when it comes to rewards and recognition and taxability. So, everything has been developed within those guidelines and within the current policies.
Questions or comments? This doesn't take away anything our employees get. It just adds to their options. Yeah, Marty?
You know, that world of wearing a watch now, it was just such a thing. And I'll, actually, all four of my wristwatches were in to be the reward. And the fact that you up the choices, because I've asked people about what I see on their desks in regards to their time of service, and some of them are a little bit more enthused about it than others. And I think that if you give people some choices, then it just allows them to have something that really means as much as we value their time of service.
We had it from last year, two years ago, just thinking it's been a conflict. Every, every five years, it's a clock, which you get to ten or after fifteen.
Now, this is.
Absolutely, well, the best thing that we could do is, if we can have some kind of award that they're actually gonna use and enjoy, that's the best. So, questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move consideration of the revised employee recognition policy. I appreciate, appreciate this is, time spent on this.
Waiving seven-day review?
Waiving seven-day review.
I would second and get them.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Chitty.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It's adopted. We're not having seven-day review. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Next is discussion consideration of the county appealing the order of the court sustaining the writ of Satoria in Polensky versus Story County Board of Adjustment. Ethan, so we went into closed session at the end of last week's meeting and discussed this in closed session. At that point, determined that there was potential action for the board to take. So, we put it on this week's agenda for discussion. Ethan, take us through that.
Yes, Dr. Jackson, we don't want to discuss or mention the legal strategy of all the session. But I think it's fair to say that we retain outside counsel to assist in this writ case of Polensky one, two, and three. So, I think the ability to appeal, what we believe is a wrong decision arrived in Polensky one, will still affect affecting Polensky two and three. And so, based on reputation also counsel and county attorney's office, we recommend that the board should actually direct us to appeal that case to hopefully change that.
Super. And the only thing I would add, hopefully not treading anywhere close to what we, what we need to not be talking about is, this is involving a case that went through our board of adjustment. And we may feel pretty strongly that, that we need to push this as far as we can.
Let's direct this to the Wanda McKay property, or it's the local trust of Wanda McKay property, large acreage on South San James. And the neighbor, Ed Mike, what his order of adjustment did, insurance CUP. And so, they use their, actually, their legal rights to challenge that, correct? And that was sustained by the district court. We feel district court relied upon some outdated case law. We believe there's a chance to appeal this and just adjust, I think it's correct to do.
Okay.
Ethan, is it appropriate to discuss about the situation, about where we are in our insurance policy that comes to cost?
Okay, I think, I mean, I think it's appropriate that we can discuss that we consider the cost and that there is, you know, policy moments, we're both having a policy moment.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for, for the public.
I have comfort going forward. I don't love to say this, but it could have a potential to be a landmark movement, but I think, I think Story County is in an ideal position at this moment to move this forward. And I have comfort expanding whatever dollars that we have to do. I think the counsel that you retained spoke very eloquently, was very clear. And I have our support, desire to move this.
Further discussion or a motion?
I would move consideration of the county appealing the order of course, sustaining the writ of Satoria in Polensky versus Story County Board of Adjustment. Cast presented by Ethan Anderson.
I second.
Motion in the second, further discussion. Chitty.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Please be able to. Next, discussion consideration of an additional HVAC unit for the server room for the jail at the Justice Center. Unbudgeted funds, ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Jovi, John, and Micah with us today.
Good morning, my guys.
Those in the back, that's who, you know, the best people to this, right?
Just in case they need something careful.
The justice situation we're in is, jail has recently upgraded their camera system, which requires hardware in a very small, you know, server room. And it's located right in the jail. So, we get the threshold, turn out rooms too long. So, we run about thirty, forty degrees Fahrenheit over what ideally would be. So, we get much hotter in the room and start having server issues for the cameras, which is a big security for this.
Yeah, and I just think it's important to note that this building was constructed eighteen years ago. We're meant to start it and design twenty-two years ago. And we weren't thinking about server rooms at that point. And so, it didn't get designed to the, to the specs that, that we run on today. So, board, questions or comments?
You don't look like a very smart administrator if you don't justify a small dollar ask here to take into account what we've done. So, I have comfort in moving this.
Let's talk about the, the ten thousand dollars. How, how are the budgets running right now? Are you expecting that we're gonna have to dip into our reserve funds to pay for this? Or are you thinking you're gonna be able to accommodate this?
Should be able to accommodate this at the time. And if it becomes an issue later on, of course, then as of now, it's like.
Yeah, and so, standard practice has been for the board to go ahead and approve something like this if we need, and it's worthy of approval, noting that it's our expectation that it's gonna get absorbed in existing dollars. But recognizing that this may be an issue that comes back, but we're not granting approval right now to go over budget. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
That's what you're looking for, yeah. Ready for a motion unless you guys have a question?
I'm not asking a question until I already said what I need to say.
I move approval of additional heating, heating, vacuum, air conditioning unit for a server room for jail, for the jail at the Justice Center for ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is unbudgeted.
Motion in the second, further discussion. Olson.
Aye.
Chitty.
Aye.
Sanders, aye, it passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, Joe.
All right, next, we get a court report from IRBM, Joe Quagron.
I gotta tell you, this is one of the funnest things you get to do as a supervisor to listen to these presentations.
I'll be right back.
No, of course.
Show and tell, Joe always brings show and tell.
Thank you, Chris. All right, good morning, board.
Good morning, Joe.
So, I'm starting something new. I'm writing it out in narrative. We'll see how far I go. If I see something shiny, you know how it works.
Swirl.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I'm gonna take my glasses off too, so I can read. So, yeah, it was August seventh since the last time I stopped in. It's been some pretty weird weather out there. We call it kind of the monsoon season. So, what I'm gonna try to do in the next fifteen minutes or less is give you an update where we left off. Where we're going beyond the next time, up to the next time we get together. And a little show and tell that reflects some, some budget items that you folks support and, and things like that. So, here we go. Well, one little side note, I, I was talking to the Ivy Department Transportation today about some things, specifically the living road we trust on, where we do get some funding, we write grants and, for instance, hydro seeders and things like that. I was, I was asking about how many counties had a hydro seeder, but we don't really know that unless I did a big list serve. But I'm guessing there's a word, so, well, back me up. There's forty, forty-one integrated roadside vegetation management counties. That means there's forty-one plans submitted to the Ivy Department Transportation for the, for counties. Four, there's four for cities, and there's six more coming online. And cities meeting like, like Dallas or, not Dallas County, but Cedar Rapids, things like that. There, and maybe Ames at some point where they annex a lot. They need a vegetation manager and to do things that maybe I used to do, what my coworkers could do. So, so as far as hydro seeders go, I'm gonna talk about those a little bit today because it's, it's been raining, and that's one of the main tools that we use to seed when it's this wet. And Darren and the crew have done quite a bit of construction. University, if you've been down to University, where they repaid that. You had four culverts done, the one on Sandy Oak Trail. That bridge, I think, is getting paved. There's already been the port, the bed, the deck on that's been poured. So, a lot of seeding. But anyway, so I'm gonna start where we left off. That was the item. We left off with contract spring. And there, you know, right, Marty, there. We left off with contract spraying, and there, you know, right, Marty, there was some positive commentary, there was some negative commentary, about our contract spraying, but at the end, after these folks were gone, you know, they got three of the townships out of four done, we ran out of money. And we haven't talked last evening, but I did get one outfit to come back and revisit five more townships, which would be Franklin, and then Washington, and then all the ones ago, I think that's Grant, Nevada, and New Albany. So the next tier, we'll talk about that at another point, as far as getting a contractor, but a lot of positive commentary coming back from folks that live out in the rural area about how good a job they did, and some folks coming into my shop, asking what they use and things like that. So, I give them a thumbs up. So, with that, that brought us to the beginning of August. My seasonal staff went and did other things, so it left Tyler and myself to kind of catch up. We didn't get a lot done as far as roadside spraying, but again, there was some other commentary about getting drainage ditch spraying done or caught up, and so we tried as hard as we could. Tyler did, obviously does a lot of that, but I got into UTV and did some work, too, and we actually did pretty well. And that's about the time the rains came, and the wind, and you got to play that by ear. So, I have it down here somewhere. Hold on, I think I got to switch gears. See, that's happening, you're right down. So, the drainage ditches that we did get done were Harden Story Three, Hamilton Story One, up by Story Z. We got seventy-five percent of Milford Thirty-Two and seventy-five percent of Grant. Okay, we didn't get all, and I say percent done, there's always going to be some brush that you miss, okay? That's major than beast, but I'm talking about traveling the whole linear miles. I don't have the miles, I didn't figure that out. Any questions on DD spraying or that? This was so long ago. And somewhere in there, guess what? The Cowler Field Day happened, right in the middle of that, that was good energy. I don't think we've talked about that much, but that, you know, and that's still ongoing.
Will you be having any kind of role in that? Does that involve, or is that enough things, or is your touch?
No, they're, actually, we're talking about putting some more seed down, because a lot of the wash, there's been some washing. They've talked about getting a better design in, this air step that opened, that ditch, and I forget, Tim, one of the Cowler boys are putting in a pollinator field buffer along the creek, which I don't really have a lot to do with, but I just went out and kind of helped them design the project, and then something they'll be working on is going to be a saturated buffer at the bottom of that, where it dumps into the west ranch of Indian Creek. So literally, I don't think I'll be a part of the process itself, except maybe some technical advice. Is that your question?
That's.
All right. We also did, and I want to keep it on a positive note, you know, equipment failures happened, but we did with our sprayer, and so, you know, this will come out of my equipment maintenance light item. We had a two-year-old sprayer engine on one of our sprayers, and the piston scored. I'm not going to describe what that means, but it means the engine kind of got shot, and we don't really know why. Two years old, the oil's good, so we had that rebuilt. We just got that back a couple weeks ago and have that unit put back together, but obviously, spray season's over, it's eleven degrees, last time I looked. So, the rains came, okay, and we stayed busy, at the same time I was able to hire two seasonal help, which hasn't happened in a long, long time in the fall. So I was able to take some money from the last, the seasonal help that quit early, okay, and they weren't disgruntled, they just had other stuff to do, and what we budgeted for. So I actually have now two more seasonal help helping us, which is great. We've been doing a lot of seeding, and that helped the seed harvest. You remember what the seed harvest means? That means that we had, we tripped out the new forty-four hundred John Deere combine, and we're still trying it, but what happened was, by the time we started combining prairie seed, well, kind of like there's a lot of corn in the fields still, was about the time, looking back at the calendar, where I would be finishing. So we were three weeks behind, and when you're talking prairie seed, a lot of it falls off, and it really falls off when it's wet and windy, it gets heavy and it's gone. So we did what we could. We had the Jolly Green Giant, as I call it, and our two little red combines, all three running, all staff, that we, you know, all hands on deck, we had what we did. That seed is dried and bagged up, but I have not taken my nerds go about and look at it to decide what the seed, what is chaff, what are percent, so I can get an idea of what, and help Mike out designs, when they do a lot of seeding on what our percent seed is and what we may have to look for. Yeah, so I've lost my way here.
You're doing a good job with that whole writing it out thing.
Yeah.
That's a compliment, so.
It's not taking away anything from your presentation.
All right, so.
I wear these pants every day.
In the meantime, you know, so I hired these folks, it rained for three weeks, so we were able to do some work in the shop, and we did some work at our Brownstonville Station. We redesigned some things and did some maintenance. I don't know if the board remembers that our boom mower, our boom mower went down in about August, too, with mowing brush on the hard vital trail. Now, the boom mower is about a 1999 John Deere, good unit, but the axle went out because that big heavy boom. So we took it into a dealership around here, and it was a $12,000 fix, so we had talked about taking the mower off and putting on another unit that Darren had. After looking at that, it was a $12,000 swap over, just to get the mower off the old one and do it, and put that on a tractor that's not that new anyway. So we decided not to. We took this tractor down to a private individual who's a mechanic, and he fixed it for a fraction of the cost. He went down to Colfax Parts, you know, Tracker Graveyard down there, got a part, put it in. For instance, it was $2,700 compared to, I think it was about $13,000 estimate repair. So what I'm trying to say is there's to look around and see who can help you, and that was kind of, so we still have that. So after harvest, or in between harvest, we started seeding, and as you know, there's a lot of seeding to do after all the erosion and all the rain and things, so we're trying to catch up. So I brought a couple things to show you. These are what we do, and I need to thank the board for supporting this kind of thing, because a lot of counties don't do this, all right? A lot of counties have hydrocedars and own add mulch. Now, this is, this is the catch or show and tell. Does anybody know what this is? It's not a nerve jam. This is what used to be a silo. So, and I have that sheet here from our distributor. We have done 1,000, 1,200 feet, linear feet of these silos in Story County, just to help stop erosion and protect our water. These are what you would call, or, so checks, go in the bottom of the ditch, and they have these two-by-fours, or two-by-two stakes that you drive through, okay? So 1,200 feet of this, and I'm not the only one doing it. Darren's crews do it, too, or Andrew's crews, or whoever you want to call them. So there, we all work together. The main thing is to keep our water quality. We're not held by any standards, just our own, in the county level, and so we do the best we can. We feel good about that. The next thing that we budgeted for is mulch, okay? This is that green stuff you see out. A lot of contractors are doing it, and you see what we do all the time in Story County, and it is a product, I don't know if one of, I can just throw it at you here, but not really throw it, but.
I was going to say, might catch it if you do it.
So you can open it up. That is recycled newspaper and wood combination. So it feels pretty good for me to get our hydrocedar, which was eighty percent grant-funded, okay? We're using recycled newspaper, recycled wood, and if I'm filling out the country fill station, we pump water out of the creek.
Right.
And we don't, so we're not real water damage, so it feels pretty good. And if the seed is harvested, that's all in house stuff. We got pretty good system, you guys support that, I'm thinking. So that was my show and tell, not too crazy. By the way, this is just wood fibers. We make all kinds of different ones, but this is good enough for us. So what's coming up? Well, we're still seeding. We would like to try to get some prescribed fire, and now that the corn is coming out of the field, and they're working the fields a little bit, we don't want to do a lot of prescribed fire with corn sauce. That's a bad thing.
Potentially.
And so, you know, the next thing, we'll probably finish this month out seeding, then we need to focus on brush, brush work and logging in our grains districts. We're going to move back up the Harden Story Three, and then there's one that you probably don't know a lot about, but it's New Albany Eighty-Five, and that is the area that comes into the east end of Hickory Grove, and we're going to get some brush out of there. There's some willows growing over, I think a thirty-six inch high. No, eighteen.
Either way, a little over title is not a good one.
Well.
It's not over titled.
All you're saying is, you probably have some impediment on that tile floor.
Well, we're looking at maybe doing a wetland there, if the NRCS can help us and things, it's way out there, that would be my deal, so.
Well, that would help with some of the sedimentation.
Yeah, probably. Yes.
So, we didn't like a new combine? You liked a new combine? How'd you new combine?
Okay, so, it's hard, you know, it, we went and visited two other counties. Well, one private person that seeds over by Guthrie Center, and then we went to Lynn County, where they have the same unit, and tried to take pictures, talk to them on how to set it up. There's a lot of things we had to take off, little manufacturing, how to order the seed out. So once we figured that out, we liked it, but it took us, Marty, about the whole time as the seed was falling. If we'd, I think if we'd had a normal year where we had started, when the seed was ready.
Right. You got more?
Yeah, so absolutely. I mean, it's thirteen feet wide compared to six, so we were able to, you know, overdouble and go.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is, we didn't have a great harvest year, but it didn't have anything to do with the equipment we had. It had everything.
Clearly, you made better, it was only one year. I would leave a marker down for this board, the future board, is he has a building west of his shop that needs to come down, and I would ask that the new board provide the means to do it. I don't know.
Not only needs to come down, we need to look at what needs to be there.
And so what do you need in that sense? Just the bullet drop, the tin removed? What are you looking, if you could get your wish granted today, what would that be?
So I've done a little research on that, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes, so I think that there has been an interest in one person taking it down, a little bit of this that would do it, and it just, the board needs to get together with my supervisor, and I think we can get it out of there. And that's demolished and all.
It gives you a sign to do whatever the board would so choose going forward, and I think.
So.
It would have to be done either way, when you make a decision or an interim prior.
We just talked about this three weeks ago, when Mike and I were talking about budget, and we haven't really revisited it, so I think it's right there.
Yep, the reality is, the building's coming down. Either we're going to choose to take it down, or it's going to come down on its own.
That is exactly what we have going on over there.
Anything else for Joe?
No, I just wanted to make the board aware that this, I think, that needs done, and it's at that behalf.
Absolutely. Good job, Joe.
Thank you, yeah.
Sure. Now, other reports update on our draft watershed implementation matrix. Leanne, Mark.
Joe.
Good morning again, Leanne.
Good morning. Thank you. Today's, I can't judge a mess here.
You heard that, told the voice, too.
Last week, informational meetings, presentations, we're helping with both the Story County Conservation
Board, planning and commission on the draft watershed assessment implementation matrix. I'm here to, before you today, just to give you an update of where we are in the timeframe from this point forward. We are trying to schedule a joint meeting between the Conservation Board and Planning and Commission for November twenty-seventh. This point is actually kind of, we're not sure if we're going to have a board or if planning is only commissioned. So we might be having to push that back a week later. Our goal was to get them on the board in early December with this draft implementation matrix, so that, one, if there are any budgetary implications, we can start building those in. Cannot guarantee that will occur. It's very important that we have that joint meeting, planning, zoning commission, and conservation board. We're doing a joint meeting, because I'll be on the quickest, but we have to, we'll go back to individual meetings. Just quickly, some follow-up from those two meetings. As a staff, the working group met last week to discuss this. Four areas, emphasis are areas of direction, develop criteria for low, medium, and high prioritization of working for, including the draft matrix. We all have worked together over so many years, I think, in the C2C implementation matrix. We kind of knew what we meant by just, yeah, that's a medium priority, or I, point was very well taken, though, but you cannot necessarily read our minds all the time.
Yeah, we needed beyond what you guys know. We need a layperson to be able to read it and understand why this become a medium.
And we do, we do have, we met last week and have those ideas set forth. Establish an estimated budget, establish estimated budget amounts and funding sources. I'll be honest with you, when you see it, there will be a lot of meetings, because some of these are outside of really what we can try to even crystal ball with some of them, but then there are others that we have pretty good amounts to share with you. And then establish some timeframes. We went back and visited the C2C implementation matrix. Those are going to be built into this as well, and you'll see that through our prioritization as well, too, there's a logical nexus between the two. And then, what did we exclude, and then why? So in order to help, to go prepare, I'm going to send back to the planning, zoning commission, and conservation board, of course, include the board supervisors as well, in order to guide and facilitate the discussions on November, hopefully twenty-seventh. We've identified some questions that will, we'd like them to respond to in advance, but help us through the discussion. One, we're asking to go back and revisit the survey monkey and personally take that survey. Not necessarily go on survey monkey and do it, look at the properties that they can do that. Then, do you think timeframes are reasonable and achievable? The third question would be, is there a county department and or outside organization that should administer or ask for some matrix? Is this the county staff person, existing or new, and or including outside agency or organization? Fourth question is, if I can read my writing, how does this project compare, how do these projects compare to other current or proposed projects in terms of importance? Asking to rate one, the five high. And then number five, what are other water quality improvements and practices we should consider that are not represented in the matrix? That's a similar question with the survey monkey, but again, we have it in that. As of the time we're presenting last week to both conservation and planning commission, we only have five individuals that have responded to the survey monkey. We have a list of about forty individuals that we sent, we identified stakeholders, we sent out to them, just some personal follow-up, so I think we still need to consider reaching out to them, and a lot of us have entered in that, looking to get those answers or responses. Other questions thus far, of what's been happening?
So, when we had originally assigned this to this committee, it was a little unclear who was taking the lead, or what department would take the lead, et cetera. Now, you're up here, you're reporting to us, so then I've heard consulting, or, you know, meeting with P and Z and with the Conservation Board. So who actually does the committee feel would take the lead at this point for implementation?
That's not the answer we have at this point. And if you do look at the draft implementation matrix, the.
I didn't get.
It wasn't a memo that went a couple weeks ago to you guys?
Thank you. It was not posted on the website. Was there a reason that we didn't get it posted?
We're not doing anything with the matrix right now. So right now, all that's happening is, the matrix is going from planning and zoning commission and conservation board to build something that's coming to board supervisors. We haven't got.
Which is why it wasn't attached on the agenda.
I feel it on my page.
Okay.
But there's an overall goal, with several bullet points, that does get in part of that. The countywide, I'm fair with you, I do want to read this. Countywide watershed assessment. County-wide watershed assessment conducted in 2018 was developed to serve as a starting point in guiding future watershed management decisions. The assessment is a high-level overview of current watershed status. The assessment is not intended to be a final static report. In addition to the actions outlined in the implementation line, the county will, for bullet points identified where further study is needed, regularly review prioritizations through assessments, make necessary adjustments, identify who oversees the effort and strategies, establish schedule for development of watershed management orders, define and dedicate ongoing resources for further study and implementation, and then last bullet, review the implementation line. So at this point, working groups still, we're still working through a lot of this, but that is what we see as the overall, overall goal.
Yeah, Loris asked a great question here, and so let's just try, while we aren't in a position to answer that question at this point, let's at least answer how that's going to get answered, right?
Thank you.
So there's absolutely three major questions that we've got to deal with. Now that we've got this done, okay, great, we've got the report, now what are we going to do with it? We've got it, we've got to start, we aren't going to be able to do everything, especially of me, right? There's going to be certain things we're going to be able to do sooner rather than later. What are those things? Who's going to do it? Is that in-house? Which department is it? If it's a department, is it existing head staff? Is it new staff? Are we going to contract with an outside entity? We've got to find who's going to do it, what we're going to do, who's going to do it, and then what resources are, and primarily the board of supervisors, what resources are we going to be able to put behind the what and the who? But we've got to get to all that in order, and that's not going to happen, Loris, until, well, it's going to happen before we send the budget that's ready to publish by that third week in January, but that, it kind of is those first few weeks in January, as we're working through the budget, there's, there's staff implications, there's all kinds of different implications that hit us in January.
And I guess I'm feeling a little bit of that, six weeks into the new year when we start talking the budget, so that's why I'm asking. So I did hear you basically, you know, briefly recap what you were kind of looking at here, but I just want to be clear here that I'd like for us to be able, as we work on the budget for 2020, to be able to know kind of what those steps and who that would be, especially if we have any cleanup that we need to do as far as assigning staff.
Well, that's a must. I mean, we don't, if we're truly going to put resources into this, then we've got to have some idea of why we're putting resources in, and if we don't know that by the third week in January, there's no way.
That's right.
Which is the reason that we got this push, is the reason that, that LeAnn would like to have a joint meeting in late November, may or may not happen, but the backend timeline doesn't change when we have to know if we're going to do something.
And then another question I have as the groups dealing with this, is about how does this affect the two, the two major watersheds we have? The South Skunk, when I say affect, I mean as far as the watershed management authority groups themselves. You know, what role does the South Skunk and the Squaw Creek, what do those two watershed authority, management authorities, how does they fit into this?
There is, when you, when you look at the implementation matrix, it's categorized programmatic regulatory capital credits or capital projects. Under the programmatic, there's a, there's a language that in essence is an unwavering commitment of our supervisors to continue with existing and future watershed management authorities. And Story County has, has an incredible record of being the lead in establishing the WMAs, that we can positively affect and anything with the assessment assumes rightly that that is a role that the county will still be taking.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I would just underscore that, so the beauty about the two existing watershed authorities, one that is truly up and operational and starting to do good work.
Four Mile, right?
Yeah, obviously Four Mile out, and I know, I appreciate, we've got, what, 100 yards of Four Mile, that's primarily right by probably the good roots, but the ones that Story County seems to have the largest voice, and we've got two now. One that is fully operational and starting to make some decent progress, we're starting to make progress, and the other one that's just getting formed, those are, okay, so those are out of the gate, right? We're already starting to see what Squaw Creek watershed management authority can do. We're hopeful that the headwaters of South Skunk gets up and operational and starts to do some things. This is more interesting to me in terms of what pieces of those two are we going to take and replicate for the rest of our watersheds in Story County, and what pieces are we going to try to kind of reinvent the wheel? That's all part of the conversation that we get to have, Loris.
And just on the headwaters on here, it was totally approved, signed, reported, has been filed with the Secretary of State, and now has been handed to Rivers to organize the meeting with the, or formal watershed management.
Is, I consider you are more than liaison, and also an important resource for those watershed management authorities, so is there some way that you can make sure that when you talk to Prairie Rivers and they go forward, that we've got plenty of notice, all, all of the supervisors about, just so that we know, especially on this new one, as we listen, kind of know what's going on?
I don't, I have not received anything back from the headwaters. I will contact you.
Good, any questions or comments for LeAnn?
No.
LeAnn, thanks.
Thank you.
Public forum number two, opportunities for members of the public to comment on anything you'd like to comment on, come right on up to the microphone. Cindy, you got any good words of wisdom for us today?
No, but it's very kind of you to ask.
Absolutely. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to LeAnn's assignments. Marty?
We had an election last week, and I'd like to compliment Lou Birkin on her success, and I only hope that she has the good fortune and the good luck that I had. It is a wonderful job, you kind of had a good time being a supervisor in Story County. It's been a well-run organization, and I think you have the opportunity to do great things. One of my personal high points of being on the board is right minus on this plaque, and we're going to go break ground in an hour and a half, and facility that is going to double in size, and will be one of the largest businesses in the county, and last but not least, ahead of all the time with the de-cap meeting last week, lending money for organizations that help children and their parents to have more successful outcomes than they otherwise have, and some of the other little stuff that the supervisor does.
Absolutely, yep. Loris?
Boost continues to move forward slowly, and discussing how we will go ahead and fund scholarships to, or whether it be a block grant for early childhood, childcare, et cetera, so that was the highlight of the boost meeting last week, which I participated in by phone, okay? I've got, this afternoon, Herta is making progress on the insurance problem that we had encountered, I believe almost all of the drivers for our two contract agencies have been trained, there's one who's out due to his spousой. So we'll get him trained, but that means we're going to be able to pull the insurance rates down, so I'm looking forward to that conversation this afternoon by phone. We'll be done at paging resources, and I'm going to announce this Thursday, not last Thursday, but this Thursday, is the meeting, the second meeting for the Story County Opiality Task Force presentations, and it will.
So were you all alone that Thursday night?
No, I went.
You went?
It was on my calendar, that's why I had it wrong, so I will admit, I actually drove to Mary Greeley that night and went, oh, I got the wrong Thursday night. And so it's this Thursday at seven o'clock at Mary Greeley Auditorium, Bessie Mayers Auditorium, and it is people talking about their personal stories and their family's stories involved with the opiality. Thank you.
Super. Let's see, for me, I've got my first meeting of the International Economic Development Task Force, through Mango, actually later this afternoon, after we do the groundbreaking, I'm excited about, about that. I would be remiss if I didn't echo Marty's comments, congratulations to Linda, the reality is, if Linda, and I'm confident that she will, but if she works as hard at being a supervisor as she did in the campaign, we're, we're in good shape. That doesn't take away from the fact that we're losing a really good one in Marty's team. Marty came to the board under really, really tough circumstances, and dug in from day one, and Story County, Marty is a better place because of your time here, and I think everybody would echo appreciation for what you put in, and it's going to be a lot of fun to watch what's next, what's next for Marty and Jill, because you're going to have a great adventure, and I know I appreciate the time I got to spend with you here.
Thank you.
Anything further for us, or I take a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.